Good afternoon, council. Just before I call the meeting to order, in the last meeting we had, we had several phones going off. So I'm gonna ask everyone who has a cellphone if you can make sure it's silenced at this time, please. I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting for June 12th, 2025 to order with adoption of the agenda. Uh, Council Devlin, second by Council Cherry, all in favor? Motions carried. Adoption of the minutes of the committee of the whole of May 15th, 2025. Council Orlando, Council Devlin, all in favor?
Your worship, just a question regarding potential change to the minutes.
Okay, yep.
Um, yeah, just when, when a point of order is called, um, first calling point of order needs to state what it is and, um, the chair needs to make a ruling and those also need to be reflected in the minutes. Um, and I don't feel that they are, uh, regarding this item six A right now. And I was wondering what a resolution could be. It's my feeling that, um, it's not an error of, uh, minute ticking, but that our procedure at the table was hard to reflect accurately.
Point of clarity, your worship, I'm just looking to understand what changes you'd like made.
Um, I think, um, the point is regarding, uh, how we address those points of order. Um, uh, so it needs to be some point of order, then the chair asks the person why they are calling a point of order. They explain according to what section of the, um, charter or relevant procedure or procedure by law. Then, uh, the chair makes a ruling on that, uh, and that's sort of the, the basic outlines.
Okay.
And, uh, that, uh, is not reflected here. I don't think the person taking the minutes, the staff members taking the minutes could reflect it because we did not handle that. But when a point of order is taken, um, it does need to be recorded, but it needs to be recorded as what it was regarding, what it was and what the ruling was. So in future, at, uh, at the table when these are happening, I think they need to be reflected.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that change and we'll, we'll note that and do that. Any other business arising from those minutes? Saying none, I'm gonna go right into delegations and presentations. Uh, actually, before I do that, just announcements from the mayor. I want to thank the Sonnites and, uh, and, uh, group for their presentation last night. Uh, thank Council Lucy Allen for the dinner and, uh, for an excellent evening of speakers. So grateful to see that in our community. All right, moving on to delegations and presentations. Revelstoke Mountain Resort is here. They're gonna make a presentation.
Hello.
Peter, come on up. You're welcome to, uh, second computer on the podium there and.
Do I need to connect, do I need to connect there or you, do you have it? I can do that.
Just underneath there.
Thanks, Paul.
I should know by now.
Peter, I'm just gonna ask you to move in just a bit for two reasons. First of all, then come on a little closer. Uh, Council Lucy Allen can see you and, uh, this is being livestreamed. So then the community can see if they wish to.
Perfect. Hello, everybody out there in livestream land. Um, thank you, your worship, the honorable councillors, thanks for having us or having me. Uh, my name's Peter Nielsen, I think everyone here, but maybe not everyone in the livestream knows who I am. Um, and I work with Revelstoke Mountain Resort. Here to give a bit of an update on what's happening, what's been happening, uh, some operational updates and some project updates. Um, Jason sends his, uh, regrets. Um, his son's graduating high school this week, so more important business to attend to.
Of course.
Than this, so, um, great, I'll jump into it. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions, I'm, uh, happy to interact and answer any questions. I think everyone had a chance to see this deck prior to. Um, it's very visual. Um, yeah, I thought I'd talk a little bit about what just happened. So we just, you know, we rolled out a winter, closed our, closed the first ski operations April 21st was our last day of operations. Um, and we had a record winter. Um, I'm sure you can, if you're attending at the hill or even in town, it felt busy. It was busy. We had, um, I think, you know, from our, from our perspective, record attendance, um, by far, uh, a big leap forward. Um, and we really saw that across all of our business units. And I think, you know, the accommodators and other businesses in town really felt that. Um, a lot of the growth year over year came out of the US market. So, um, the, uh, the US market was very, very strong for us, um, strong for the whole town. Um, you know why? Um, with some of our partnerships into the US are a big part of that. So we've been able to really push the Revelstoke brand into US markets with success. Um, and then, uh, it was, we're at 50% discount practically for, for Americans when they're traveling. So, and the ski mark, the ski, the ski, the skiers tend to be more highly aware of that than kind of the average folks in America, but more in tune with exchange rates. So they do act on it, they, they'll travel accordingly. Similarly, we would expect to see a lot more Australians this coming season for the exact same reason. Um, more that the US is too expensive and we're at a better deal. Um, so yeah, really kind of just celebrating that season and really feel like we have a great momentum heading into, um, summer. So, um, you know, from a, speaking of the US, um, obviously there's a lot of stuff happening, uh, uh, on the geopolitical stage, um, that's impacting Canada's economy. Um, you know, from a more localized perspective, specifically this summer. Um, you know, that, what does that mean for us? Uh, really, we, we feel that, um, when there's times are uncertain, um, economy, economics are a little bit uncertain. Canadians tend to stay home. Um, they tend to jump in their cars, they tend to do, um, shorter, more road based trips. Um, and the other thing, the kind of anti-travel to the US sentiment that's happening, we've seen it, this massive drop off of flights going to the US. Those folks are all gonna go somewhere. Some are choosing to go overseas, but a lot of them are starting to like booking travel within Canada. So rubber tire traffic's gonna increase sort of our Alberta and DC scaffolding markets. And we're really seeing a pattern of folks doing flying, booking flying drives as Eastern Canada. So people choosing DC as a place to travel to, sort of, you know, booking for Montreal, Toronto and flying out into the car. So, um, our expectations are really, really strong, summer attendance in Revelstoke in general, so. Um, and with lots of Canadian friends, I did, we, right, so far, early stats for Canada in general is US, the US market has shrunk a bit, especially the drive market coming in the United States, coming into Canada. Um, I don't know how much that'll impact, I mean, who knows what the sentiment will be with the time, by the time we get to winter. But, um, I do think that, that again, ski market in a lot of ways are probably more motivated by the exchange rate than the political situation. Um, and a lot of folks in America, they're, they're not, they're more worried about being welcomed in Canada than anything else. So we've really been trying to create a very welcoming atmosphere for our American friends who choose to travel to us and are so important to our economy. Um, I touched on all this, but, uh, yeah, so we're really looking forward to a great summer. Um, if you don't know, we already opened. Uh, we opened on Monday or Friday, uh, great, great opening weekend. Um, really good attendance. Uh, we soft opened the Lower Mountain for the first, uh, June 6th through the 20th and then the 21st. Uh, we'll open all our products up and everything. Um, we do have a new product coming up this year. So we're hoping to open it for July 1st, but a little bit of delays since the supply chain. Uh, and so we're looking at more of like a first week of August. So I got some photos of that a little bit later in the deck. Um, any questions about operations, winter, summer?
Just, uh, go back to winter, Peter.
Please.
Uh, latest that you've been open this year, like April 22nd or is that kind of standard?
This is like a long time ago, I think we actually went to like the 25th or something like that. But it was, yeah, we, we choose our closing date, um, just with a dartboard, but no. No, uh, January, Easter influences it. So, uh, we try to shoot for kind of mid-April. And it's not that we couldn't keep skiing. Um, skiing probably in early May was, was probably excellent to be honest. Cause it was a, we actually saw snow accumulation in the Alpine all the way through May long. We didn't see, and you're seeing it now in the rivers, cause it took that, it didn't, just started, really the high alpines only started melting a couple of weeks ago. Um, so we actually saw the snow pack increasing, so, um, we just lose audience. Like people just tune out to skiing, particularly in our, our urban markets. They're going golfing, they're jumping on their bikes, they're doing whatever, watching hockey, you know? All the things you can get in Canada when the weather gets better. Um, so yeah, um, but, uh, so this, this coming year, we're a week earlier. Uh, this Easter is actually quite a bit earlier, it's right at the, right at the end of March, early, early April, so. Yeah. Um, I thought I should throw, uh, go through some of our projects and want to just give you some progress updates, uh, a few visuals. Um, if you haven't seen it, we put our new entry monument sign up, uh, in our late fall, early winter. Um, it's still a little bit of a work in progress. Um, one of our internal guys designed this. Um, it's really a homage to, the, the heights are a homage to, uh, uh, peak and sub-peak. Uh, and then the wood and, uh, the wood is really a homage to the old snowshirts. So it's, tries to draw a little bit of historical, uh, and, uh, and context into something that, uh, hopefully feels like a really welcoming, uh, piece. And there's a great little pullout there too for folks who wanna grab a shot with that logo and basically grab this shot with themselves in it, so. Um, multi-use path. Um, as you know, um, the Cozy Road was redeveloped last summer. Uh, I'm sure some of you were inconvenienced by it. Um, and, uh, one part of the project, an important part of the project, multi-use path, never quite got completed. So it was a pretty ambitious goal to get it all done in one summer. Um, so we're right back at it now, um, hopefully paving within two weeks. So it's pretty much in a, almost ready for paving now, so, um, just need weather and availability of the paper. So that multi-use path would be a great, uh, a great addition to commuting to and from the resort with either by foot, bike, skateboard, uh, getting people off their, environment, get people out of their cars.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Um, uh, Cabot Golf Shaping. So there's been, uh, if anyone's been through the resort recently, you've seen, you're seeing a lot of equipment moving. Um, so we really got, kind of got full green light on the whole project from a provincial perspective, late fall last year. And we were going full, guns full blazing to try and, uh, get the course moving as quickly as possible. So a lot of, a lot of shaping going on. We should be hopefully planning up to six holes before the end of the summer. Um, and yeah, so one more year and we'll be opening the whole course on 27th of July. Um, but if you have a chance, there's, uh, there's a lot going on. If you, you can, you can really see, uh, the, this course starting to take shape, it's pretty cool. Um, yeah, so we've, uh, we're doing a bit of, uh, quite a, we're redoing landscape and all in and around the base. So really trying to, uh, just create a more finished atmosphere, especially if you're in the middle of a lot of construction, trying to create an oasis within that that feels really comfortable for our guests, so. Uh, I think it's a really vital part of our summer plan. Um, the Carl and Staff Housing, uh, Hotel, uh, still on track for, uh, uh, fall of 26, uh, made a lot of progress over the last year and really excited to see it taking shape. Um, Staff Housing, we were hoping to be in there this month, actually, that was our original kind of forecast late last year. Uh, we're delayed a few months, so we're gonna be in there September is the plan for us to start the full move in there. Um, which is, uh, gonna be such an awesome, and then you get 92, 92 fully kitted apartments, uh, for our staff.
And Peter, where are we with the second build? There seems to still be the crane up there and stuff that's getting ready to.
For the, for building two, Staff Housing? Uh, well, we've got the, the modular already. We have our BP ready to go for building two. We actually wanna move in and just ensure that we have, we're not over, overbuilding capacity. So we're, we're holding, we wanna get in there, get comfortable, understand it and then, uh, and make a decision after that. But we're fully ready to go, committed on it, it's just about timing.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, no problem. Uh, and it looks really good. Like I just did a tour of it last week and, uh, the finishing screen, it's, it's gonna be a really comfortable place. It's actually an important part of our aspirations around delivering a really quality experience is, it starts with the team feeling comfortable, safe, getting a good night's sleep, um, and feeling like they're, just they're part of the whole experience. So it's gonna be a real game changer for us.
So if we could, uh, impose on you and at some point we could have a tour just for our interest. Uh, we're pretty excited about what you've got going on.
Sure, I got time right now, if you'd like. No, seriously, absolutely love to, I, I could reach out and arrange it. Should I go through Cindy?
Yes, please.
Yeah, sure, uh, maybe a little later in the summer?
Okay.
Awesome, love to, love to. And we, we can't wait to show it off, so. Um, other questions?
Anyone else?
Please.
Yeah, maybe just, uh, by way of comment, one of the opportunities that I had when I was, uh, a little bit, uh, younger was the ability to travel all throughout Utah and visit all the national parks there. One of the ideas that I love that they had implemented was these little, like little posts in front of, um, all of the national parks where you could park your iPhone, take, take your selfie. So I love your new entryway and that's my comment to you guys, maybe, you know, think about putting in that little, little post so that, uh, you know, visitors that are coming, they can snapshot that little selfie in front of it and, you know, maybe.
Like, it's like a selfie stick, but it's primitive?
Yeah, it's, it's like a primitive, like if you think of like a, you know, like a, uh, four inch metal tube that's painted black with like a little flat stand on it with like a little lip to hold the, hold the camera right in place and.
On the right angle.
Yeah, at the right angle, you know, like.
I've never seen that before.
At the right, at the right distance away and then.
And like a stand here for your photo card.
Yeah, you know, and then, uh, and then, yeah, you know, little hashtag RMR sticker on the bottom of it and.
I like it.
So, yeah, that's my, that's my comment.
I love it, I love it, actually, it's a really good idea.
Anyone else?
I'll put a brought to you by.
There you go.
On it, um, thank you, uh, just, so highlight, so that's the, our, you guys have been hearing about our project that we're working on at Topo Gargoyle right now. And, uh, we've parked it as, uh, our naming, it's the Revelstoke Island. That's a, um, a bridge, suspension bridge, um, and a canola lever platform in a cliff zone, about 200 meters from the top of the island. Progressing really quickly at this point, uh, really excited about it. There's a little shot here of a helicopter and a crew that are building it. Um, and actually I have some other photos, so if you don't mind, I might just use more recent ones from this week, just to give you a bit of an idea of what it's feeling like up there. So this is the canola lever platform, um, so it really does hang out over the cliff and really puts you kind of out into some real space and the view, as you can see, is incredible, so.
Is that a bungee cord off the bucket?
Just for you. We haven't contemplated that yet, but the engineer is rated for it. So I just thought that this, that we're really excited about this project, I really do feel, a couple more shots, just kind of as it progresses. And this is just the platform. Um, I really do feel it's gonna become our number one summer attraction. Uh, it's, it's a super, it's, it right, it parked right in that, um, approachable, uh, adventure tourism that anybody could really consume and enjoy and get a real alpine experience without having any skills. You don't even have a certain fitness level, it's just you can get out there and get really incredible shots and have an experience in the alpine. So we're really excited about it and we really think it's gonna have an impact, uh, for the whole economy here. Oops.
There's a porta potty nearby for, uh, those who get a little scared.
With a selfie stick, great, uh, yes. We will definitely have washers when I do too far away. Um, so yeah, uh, we'll talk about some real estate projects. Uh, so Raven Town Homes basically complete now. And we've, uh, sold almost half of them now, so super excited about that project and how it's rolled out. And really great that we have two, two of our team who have actually bought into it, so, which is, which is awesome. Our lots of long-term senior employees. Um, uh, Benchlands, uh, Mountain Road. So we have a, uh, some town, a townhome project, uh, undergo, underway, uh, Benchlands, which is just off, authentical road. You've probably seen, if you have, if you saw the BP's and stuff go through, but, uh, we're in there, we've created the road and we're starting the layouts and everything. So a lot of work going on, uh, progressing well and they're selling as well, so. Um, and then, sorry, Mountain Road, I mentioned that road. Uh, also similar story from, uh, Mountain Road, which is previously known as Hair Paving Project, but, uh, it's the first hairpin, uh, as you go past McKenzie, that first subdivision was right underneath Donella. It's kind of parked right there. There's a 16 unit townhome project there, which is also being really well received and we haven't really marketed yet. So pretty excited about that, uh, really key projects for us to keep the momentum going at the resort. Both, um, you know, from, uh, you know, attracting new, new folks to Revelstoke, but also, uh, ensuring that we can, uh, continue to invest in the infrastructure.
Sure.
Questions?
Any questions, council? Council Cherry?
Thanks for our sales. Uh, just a question, do you have any updates on the lower Benchlines?
Um, it's like their Arrow, Arrowhead?
Yes.
Um, we put pause on that, uh, so we've, we've developed all of the, uh, infrastructure servicing road, um, and our market testing wasn't great, so we're gonna wait until the market. We just think the market wants that product more. So all of our kind of research told us that the more resort oriented product was more in demand at the moment.
Perfect, and then, uh, just another question. Uh, while I was there this weekend, uh, for open weekend biking, uh, I was asked a question if RMR has ever contemplated opening up a zipline attraction? I didn't know the answer.
Good question. We actually have a small zipline off the Arrow Park, so one exists, uh, which we're actually decommissioning because of a bunch of reasons, but. Um, yes, we've actually dug pretty deeply into some different zipline projects, um, that gone down the priority list. It's been a few years since we really looked at it, but, uh, yes, we've definitely looked at it. Uh, we have a great, and our, and our sister mountain grows as a great zipline product that, uh, it, the problem for, um, yeah, is, is location, actually. Um, so we kind of want to really go either really big and long, um, or that would live up to the Revelstoke brand, or you gotta go multi-phases and you kind of, uh, a valley to do that.
Yeah.
So a valley close to infrastructure is hard to find.
Awesome, well, excited to see how that pans out in the future, but, uh, thanks.
The end of problem?
Anyone else?
Mr. Perom. Uh, one question and then a couple of comments. First of all, people ask me all the time, Peter, Cabot, 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 when's it opening? I'm saying 2027, am I still correct?
Yeah, that, that, that's accurate.
Okay, all right, um, that's getting a lot of buzz out there.
Oh, yeah.
I got it out east and I heard it in Kelowna yesterday.
Awesome.
About Cabot, um, had a chance to go visit Mont Tremblanc, as you know, uh, Camma held their annual conference there. So that ski hill just north of Montreal is, I guess, Quebec's Whistler. Um, I did meet with the city officials and I pulled a few nuggets, um, from them. Uh, they do, for council's benefit, Mont Tremblanc does offer free transit. They had, uh, a fee for a long time and they decided, you know what, uh, let's just go with free. Their resort and their village, of course, is like 15, 20 minutes apart, unlike Revelstoke. I thought that was interesting and I know we're looking at our transit system. Another interesting nugget I pulled is they have a child, uh, program called access and participation cards. So you're getting an access card and a participation card. The city and the resort got together and said, let's offer kids age of five to 15 golf, tennis and skiing for a hundred bucks.
Cool.
So it was a partnership between the city and the, uh, resort where any child who resides in Mont Tremblanc gets a hundred dollar pass to ski, to golf and play tennis. Golf and tennis are owned by the municipality and parts of the hills own privately. I thought that was a cool venture. Um, they are interested in talking to us because they like a lot of things we're doing. So we've set up some conversations between their director and Ori.
Awesome.
And also their economic development office, so we'll be reaching out to CAP. And so we're just gonna start a sort of informal, at the staff level, a sister relationship.
Cool.
Where they wanna send some of their staffers here and maybe we, over time, can send some staff over there. They, they're doing some cool stuff and we can always learn. So it reminded me of all the compliments I received about Revelstoke that we have come a long ways. And I do hear a lot of compliments about Revelstoke and what they've done. Um, and my final comment, I, I do wanna thank, uh, Peter publicly for the behind the scenes support that you offer the city when it comes to our conferences, our workshops. We've had, uh, two events this year, um, that encompass the, the participation of Sutton. And we've got a third one coming up this October. And when I need something and dealing with logistics, uh, Cindy, Janet and I are coordinating these workshops and it involves the resort, either a tour or staying at the Sutton with our delegates and guests, uh, Peter's there. And it's just nice to reach out to you and solve some of these logistical issues. And it really, uh, commits to the, the partnership that we're trying to work towards. So I, I do wanna thank you for that, that does not go unnoticed. We've got one more to go in October and your staff have been terrific as we welcome Cam onto Revelstoke. Thank you.
Well, well, thank you very much and, uh, no, it's, uh, it's our pleasure to host. And, you know, and we really do believe in the partnership, so really appreciate the comments and, uh, and, uh, yeah, I really like, uh, like the thought you put on the drawdown. And as far as Tremblanc goes, we actually, you know, kind of, we're already partnered with, uh, Tremblanc through the Icon Path.
Right.
Uh, so we, we work really closely with Altera and, you know, have a really close relationship with them. So from that kind of operation to operation side, we're, it, there's a deep partnership already, so, um, we'd happily collaborate on.
Yes, you were both, yeah.
Sure, or, 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 you know, best, best practice sharing, whatever that could be, so, it's awesome.
Any other comments from somebody else? Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, appreciate your time, guys.
Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you, Peter.
No problem.
All right, we are good to move on to number eight unfinished business, manufactured home park communication options. Mr. Simon, do you have an overview or a presentation?
Uh, your worship, no formal presentation, based on direction from council at the May 26th meeting. Staff had prepared some options for council consideration at the committee meeting today regarding informing the public through various communication avenues about manufactured home parks. With any of these options, um, staff would certainly be looking for further direction from council on specifically what the intent of this outreach and communication is. This all stemmed from the recommendation to repeal the 1976 mobile home park bylaw that staff currently use to determine sighting within pad areas and for no other reason. So again, staff would be looking for clarification from council as to the nature of these events to use staff resources towards.
Great. Council, any comments on, uh, the four options underfoot for you?
Excuse me, I have to take this.
Great, thank you. Um, I kind of, Council Devlin, you're.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I kind of like what we see with option one, um, where it goes out in the city view newsletter. Uh, I guess one of my concerns is some of those people, um, may not be, maybe seniors and not able to get that information. So option two, where we send something out to them via the mail, might be, uh, a good option as well. So that's kind of my feeling on that, Mr. Simon. Um, you know, uh, having a public information meeting, only those who are, uh, my feelings, those who are concerned about what may be happening in their personal world, maybe the only ones that show up. And I think, you know, we thought we stroke where we nail all of the residents so that they at least got something. Uh, I know that when we're sending letters out to those who have development, their peers and, uh, in the recipient, there's some of those letters and I look at them and they have pretty, uh, dialed in description of what's going on, gives a little better understanding, so I appreciate that. So option two, I think, would be the ultimate way, uh, communicating. Um, but I'm not sure that we wanna do that every time we turn around. Uh, but definitely from, uh, an initial point, this is where we're at, this is the thing. I think that would be a good way from my perspective.
Through your worship of interest, may, um, I think it would be really important for staff to understand, like, what is the intent of communication? Are we wanting to have residents better understand their rights as residents in manufactured home parks? Do we want them to have a better understanding of the city's manufactured home park policy that is in place? Is this about informing them that we're looking at repealing the main, the mobile home park bylaws from 1976? And the rationale why we're recommending repealing it? I think that's where staff were a little, um, trying to unpack a little bit more of the intent behind this so that we can better address council's desires as a result. And I do just wanna note as well, um, any of the options will have an impact on obviously staff resources. Uh, it would prominently be the Development Services Department, which we already do spend dozens of hours, you know, collectively with respect to manufactured home parks, be looking at the counter, phone calls, emails, um, quite frequently. And the Corporate Services Department as well, through communications, obviously has a heavy hand in any communication related material.
Thank you for that. And so I'll go back to your first question. If we're gonna send something out, we need to be, uh, to the point. We're repealing, this is the reason, these are the things that we've done in place. Uh, these are your rights and basically we're letting you know as a homeowner what your options are, if there are options. Uh, my concern through all of this is what falls off the table if we get you to go in that direction, both in your department and in Ms. Williams' department for communications? There's only so many hours in the day. And I think, when I look at our staff, you guys have maxed them out, absolutely maxed them out. So I look at, okay, so how much more can I put on you where you, uh, see me coming into the office and either have a baseball bat hiding behind you or, you know, or it gets to be a point in time where we push the envelope so much and people haven't got the capacity and then we get sick. So those are really my concerns. And even if we don't go that far, if, okay, so if we're pushing you, uh, does that mean short-term rentals is not gonna be dealt with? Those sorts of things. If I push Ms. Williams, are there things that she's not gonna be able to fix the website? So those are the things that I get concerned about. But I just was giving you. So those are the things that I get concerned about. But I just was giving you my perspective. If we're gonna go forward with anything and then we need to be reasonable, what are we gonna do? Are we putting the fear in people by sending something out? That's one of my concerns. It's like, what's the issue? And so when I look at from my own family's perspective and my family, let's say my mother or my mother-in-law would receive a letter, it would be, they'd read it through. Absolute panic would set in. And then it was like I would take days or not weeks to kind of move that back, saying it's all okay. So those are, uh, my concerns. Uh, response to that?
Yeah, through your worship, um, staff would certainly share those concerns as well. If we send out four hundred plus letters, I think individuals are gonna be saying what's going on here and then we'll be flooded with calls, visits, meetings, emails, et cetera. Um, certainly has the potential unintended consequence of creating delays. Um, and I do think it's important to note, if the intent is to make sure that people are aware of their rights, should there ever be a redevelopment application? The policy that council adopted in June twenty twenty three already has, is twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four? I think it's twenty twenty three. Um, already has really specific provisions in there that before we even let someone submit an application, they need to notify every tenant within the manufactured home parks, they need to give timelines, they need to inform them of their rights under the manufactured home park tenancy act. They need to inform them of the city's policy. So that process in and of itself, if there ever is an application to redevelop, triggers substantial early notification to every single member within a manufactured home park. Uh, we would require them to host public information meetings and that's where we would actually have something for staff and an applicant to talk about, clarify while any concerns that are coming up and, and take in any feedback for future council considerations part of any redevelopment application. That's right, I just, I communication is always a really positive thing, but I think really important how it's tailored in and what are we trying to achieve with it, right?
So then just, you know, what you're saying there might be the way to go. When something spurs that application, then we go out with the communication and go from there.
And through worship by May, the nice thing about doing it that way is the onus is on the proponent of that redevelopment application where it's not on city staff. We might support them at a cost with doing a landowner letter mailout. Um, or we might say, go and pin them on every single door in your manufactured home park to make sure everyone gets it in a timely manner. So it, again, would reduce the resource requirement from staff most certainly.
Good. Thank you for your input. Counselor Stakers?
Yeah, and I think if I'm understanding the conversation correctly, one of my concerns would be that if we were to mail this out, are we setting the standard? That every time there's a change affecting mobile home parks in the Tennessee Act, are we then expected to mail this out, which would be potentially problematic for your department? Um, because a lot of this we, we don't control, right? It's at a provincial level. So that would be, that would be my concern with setting up standard and is, are, are we taking it upon ourselves now become the communicator of any change in, in, in policy? And do you guys really have the capacity to monitor all of these changes as they take place, right? So.
Any other comments from council? Counselor Devlin?
Yeah, I think it's been covered. I, I just be repeating some people's.
Counselor Lander, you have your name?
Yeah, uh, thank you. Um, Mayor Solz, I, I feel that um, I would prefer something closer to option three, which includes uh, um, doing notifications and mailouts and then hosting uh, some sort of an open house looks like in the fall, later in the summer or in the fall. Um, I sense there's quite a bit of uh, questions that people have and, and it would be good, in my view, to get people in one place. In terms of what, uh, one place to hear other people's questions, hear their questions, get them answered. In terms of um, uh, staff time, it does take staff time, but I think also um, staff have said they get people coming in, asking questions and that they resolve fairly successfully once they have an opportunity to uh, ask and answer questions. So hopefully we can uh, put that in one place. Um, in terms of scope, my feeling is that, you know, we, there are a lot of uh, or some changes have happened, including the new policy. Um, in addition to that, we are proposing repealing uh, another policy. Uh, or, and then as well, um, as that uh, there's uh, external issues or maybe a development application. So uh, the view would be to communicate holistically, not about one particular policy change. Uh, but all of them to uh, make sure people have some, some answers to the questions. And I do sense there's quite a bit of demand, um, and to alleviate uh, concerns uh, through a letter, I think it's good to follow up with in-person meetings where people can uh, get any answers that may, may have resolved and be referred to consistent messaging.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Devlin?
Yeah, just a comment. I mean, I feel, if I'm remembering correctly, we did quite a bit of communication around the mobile home policy that we put in, the way we did it.
Right.
That information, and we didn't just kind of throw it into the wind, I believe, like we did we do some sort of public information session on that, I believe, or we?
Mr. Simon?
I could be wrong. I could be remembering something.
Your worship, Counselor Devlin, uh, it was a topic that was brought up frequently with our zoning bylaw rewrite when we were doing the coffee chats, especially for the south side neighborhood. Um, so we certainly had, you know, fifty plus residents there. Uh, it was a topic that was discussed as part of our official community plan review and it did go to our advisory planning commission for the policy itself.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, I feel like the communication and the information has been put out there. I don't know how much. This was, this was spurred specifically by the repealing, the
Right.
repealing bylaw. I don't know how much the public, I don't know how much the public has any interest in the reality of this bylaw from nineteen seventy six that is now outdated, but covered by anything. It's, it's, if there is anything to be done on this, it's mostly a perspective piece. It's we will be seen as changing something, but mobile home parks, people will automatically assume it's worse. So the question, I suppose, comes down to council, do we do the political thing and get it out there? But hey, no, we're not changing anything with mobile home parks, this is a housekeeping item and do, how do we weigh that against staff time with an over prescribed department that is already working on a lot of big projects? So I would be at the most in favor of option one. I don't think I would go any further than that. Um, and I think option one would just be specifically that. We are repealing a bylaw, this is not changing anything. Here is just a little maybe more than just a headline, the City View's newsletters kind of explaining that this is a housekeeping item, that it's from nineteen seventy six and this changes nothing. Essentially, uh, we do things just so that people can understand that. I don't know that we need particularly a mailout if, I mean, that word gets around just fine. So, so I think that's about as far as I would wanna see us go with that.
Okay. For that comment. Any other comments from council? Counselor Cherry?
Yeah, I just think it's uh, a bad move to overly politicize appeal of a bylaw from nineteen seventies. That's already been replaced. It's just technically a housekeeping amendment. Uh, yeah, just leave it at that.
Okay, great. Any other comments from council regarding this? Counselor Lander?
Um, just seeking clarity, um, through the chair on uh, what? Um, so for example, uh, Mayor Solz, you're advocating for option one or option number two? Um, is that what you are hoping for?
Well, that's what I, I, I'm actually, after I hear comments from staff and comments around the table, I'm, and really don't think we need to do anything more than option number one. Um, having thought about that and the fact that should there be a trigger on development, then there would be a letter that would go out to the residents regarding that. Uh, Counselor Cherry?
For clarification to staff, what would you like to see in option number one? Is it that there's a change to an old bylaw that's being repealed? Is it all the things that uh, Director Simon talked about earlier?
I think, you know, just noting that there's a change to a bylaw that people don't get, uh, not to get worked up about this, this is a housekeeping issue. Um, there are people in the community who are concerned. I don't think we need to deal, deal with that. But uh, if I were to put that forward, then that would be what I would want. Hearing what you've said, it is just a housekeeping issue going forward. Um, so I'm quite prepared not to do anything or option one at the most from my perspective. Uh, because Mr. Simon has already said, if there's gonna be development in an area, then those who will be affected by the development will be notified in the way that we normally notify them so that people can respond. Now, I don't know if that's answered your question, Counselor Orlando, from my perspective.
Um, yeah, I'm just wondering if anyone is planning on uh, bringing it forward. Anyways, um, I uh, support uh, option number um, three. Uh, and the reason being is that in terms of the question that we are posing here, um, what, you know, what our staff is asking us, what, what do you wanna communicate about? I think the best format is to ask, you know, to provide information, but then ask people, the residents, what their concerns are. That's an easier way of, of dealing with it instead of trying to anticipate all the questions they have, which we might not know uh, from their perspective. They can, you know, we can provide the baseline information and then they can follow up with what they're doing. I think option number one is, you know, we, we don't have a ton of subscribers to our um, uh, newsletter, email newsletter and with any social media promotion, you're only getting a small percentage of, of your subscribers and only a small percentage of your subscribers are uh, uh, or a certain percent are even active anymore. So I feel it will, would just be an inconsistent communication that may answer, may, you know, just raise more questions and, and put more traffic to City Hall uh, on a one-off basis. Um, so um, I would like to uh, propose that um, uh, option three, if I'm ready to move, that uh, public information be scheduled to for manufactured home park residents, uh, resources regarding city policies, antenna protections and uh, and, and that, and implying that is the addition of the other steps outlined in one and two.
So is there a second, or that's a motion you're making, Counselor Orlando?
Uh, yes.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
Second it for the purpose of discussion.
Alright, so Counselor Devlin is seconding that, seconding that uh, discussion on the motion. Any further discussion than uh, than what you've said, Counselor Devlin?
Yeah, uh, I'm not going to support it despite the fact that I signed it and I think that's significant overkill without a very specific plan in terms of what we would be communicating and so what purpose of that is, which I still don't actually understand it. Honestly, if we're looking at this report, the estimated cost of such a thing is way too high for what it's essentially housekeeping. So I won't be supporting it, but I will sign it just for the discussion.
Alright, thank you. Any other comments from council regarding the motion on the table? Counselor Cherry?
I just wanna reiterate that I think it's a bad idea to overly uh, politicize this issue. Right, let's keep it that way.
Thank you. Uh, I'm not gonna support it, uh, and, and the reason is, I, I from comments from staff and that there will be a way to reach out should there be any development and it is a, uh, sending of, uh, uh, antiquated law. So that would be my reasoning. Anyone else wanna make a comment before I call a question? Say now, all those in favor of option three? Note that Counselor Orlando's in favor. Those opposed know that the balance of council is opposed, this motion is defeated. We're gonna move on to discussion papers, uh, C Click Fix update. Uh, Mr. Jips, do you have an overview or a presentation?
I have no presentation working, but glad to have been an overview.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, thank you. So this, uh, this report was brought forward, this, sorry, this discussion paper was brought forward at the request of uh, one of our counselors that kind of an update as uh, there was some public feedback around C Click Fix, so there was a question on the effectiveness of it and is it working to its full potential? So from a quick high-level standpoint, um, then you'll see in the report there, give you a bit of the back history as far as how we've seen C Click Fix grow in popularity. We've shifted our use of it over the years, uh, with a little bit of a change for, in our internal processing to now uploading, manual bylaw officers are now uploading all of the complaints and the, the submissions we receive through all forms of communication, whether it be phone call, email, uh, or voicemail. Uh, we now upload all those to C Click Fix. We'll see a spike in the numbers. It, uh, it is reflective, obviously, of, of, of that, but also the fact that more people are, are aware of C Click Fix and are using the submission, the ability to submit the, the complaints directly through that system to us as well as we have been pushing that as the main form of submission for uh, for complaints. Um, overall, the system's not fantastic. It does have quite a few limitations on the backend for staff, for the use of staff. Now, we're using it to the best of our ability currently. It does create some administrative challenges for us. Uh, it does allow us to be able to pull out some stats for you guys, as you've seen in historical reports. Uh, it does allow us to kind of pull out where those trends are for some of the complaints. However, we are in the process of onboarding onto additional, a new software system in the Development Services Department. And a part of that software will be the bylaw complaint submission as well. So it is something we are slowly shifting away from. It'll be a bit of a transitional period. It won't be as soon as we onboard to this new software, full stop. C Click Fix gets shut down tomorrow. It will be a transitional period. We will do uh, communication through means of, uh, through uh, our communications coordinators, such as social media posts, newsletter posts, things along those natures, try to get it out there and let people know we're shifting over to this new system. Um, but, which has a lot more of the functionality in the background that the, the bylaw staff need. The other piece of it and uh, our, our operations manager, Jason, is online as well if you guys have questions for him. Because they are, Public Works is the other user of C Click Fix. Right now it is split primarily to bylaw and then partially over to our parks as well as operations, our Public Works Department. So the big challenges we are facing, honestly, it has turned into a bit of a social media style as far as the, because public can comment on these open complaints. It can turn into a little bit of a social media discussion on some of these complaints, which does hamper uh, investigations. It does hamper being able to have constructive communication with this, uh, that person who submitted that complaint. Um, as well as because they do allow full anonymous complaint submissions. It, it can turn into, we have seen cases where it can be personal attacks against individuals and they do get named. And it is a manual exercise for staff to go in there once they see it and actually remove that and hide that so that the public can't see it because it's not perceived as slander against individuals or personal attacks against individuals. Uh, overall, the system is meeting, it, it, it's working, but there's a lot of room for improvement. There is some significant costs associated with the software as we do identify in the report. Uh, it is, there is an annual cost of around eleven thousand dollars American. Um, which obviously with the way the dollar is, it can skew it a little bit higher right now.
Eighty thousand dollars a year roughly?
Uh, roughly, right? Give or take a couple. Uh, but if, as essentially this is wrapped into the new software, Development Services is currently onboarding onto, which will eliminate that cost as it is all one part of, sorry, part of one platform and that we are paying for the, uh, out of the department's budget already. And then the Public Works Department is in the process of looking at uh, switching into a different work order software as well, something that meets their needs. So it is something that right now we are currently in the process from all perspectives of slowly shifting away. Um, however, before we do, as I stated before, we will do effective communications so the community aren't shocked by the fact that it's suddenly switching over to a different platform.
Thank you, Mr. Jips. Uh, one of, one of the concerns that I have with the, this style of platform is there's a perception in the community that this is an instant notification process that they tell us there's a fire going on behind somebody's house. It's not, we're not monitoring those things twenty-four seven. And instead of them actually picking up the phone and calling the fire department or doing things, those things get on there and it, it looks like, and then as you've already elaborated, that social media aspect where people put others down for complaining, but also it's like, uh, you know, somebody has placed something in my yard. Uh, city staff haven't seen that. Why it hasn't, nobody's taken care of that in three days and hasn't responded to me, that sort of thing. It becomes that perception that it should be a personal interaction with those who complain and that's not what the software is designed for. So I just have concerns with whatever we do as we move forward and uh, uh, Mr. Zimmer, any comments from Public Works uh, perspective regarding what uh, what the public expects you to do as soon as a complaint is, uh, is watched?
Yeah, um, your worship, thank you. Uh, from our perspective, uh, it's the anonymous work orders that really cause the problem. Um, I've consulted with staff and it really becomes a, there's no accountability to the reporting of uh, work orders and work requests. So that's where the problem lies and shifting or sifting through um, the work requests. and work requests. So that's where the problem lies and shifting or sifting through, um, the work requests and determining which ones are valid and which ones do not is a problem.
Right.
Um, and then the commenting, the anonymous commenting is actually the biggest number one problem for us.
Good, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, Council Orlando?
Yeah, Your Worship, thanks. Yeah, I had a chance to sit down, uh, for a bit with Mr. Gips this weekend, review the proposed new system. And I think it looks great. Um, you know, in my view, the, you know, the system's been around for just over ten years. It's, uh, a good time to look for updates and improvements. Uh, it, uh, is already software that we have, so this is sort of just using another feature that's available to it. Uh, that comes with a cost saving. I mean, certainly some of the, the features that we had a chance to review would address some of the, uh, concerns, uh, for example, that Marisol's expressed. Uh, for example, when you're dealing with an individual complaint, uh, you're sort of channeled into the type of complaint questions you receive, uh, are related to that complaint, whether it's a light is out or it's, uh, something unsafe or et cetera, et cetera. Uh, so yeah, it seems like a, a really positive step forward. Uh, and, um, one thing I just, I think I would be remiss not to mention is that my staff has been putting in a lot of work, a lot of good work and, uh, making a lot of headway and improvements, uh, in, in bylaw enforcement. Uh, things like, especially from, you know, starting at the top end from, uh, higher administrative, uh, systems such as this one and other things. Uh, so I think we really have an opportunity to, um, uh, continue, uh, those improvements. And finally, the last thing I wanted to say that's really good about the system that I like a lot is that, uh, because all of the, the natures of the complaints or notifications are, uh, better categorized, um, it, it can, the system can generate much better data on what we're looking at. So we have a, a bigger, better understanding of, of, you know, what the complaints that people have. As, as council members, uh, committee members know, uh, parking is the number one complaint. But it'd be nice to know is that, you know, you know, where are those exactly? Is it in the commercial areas? Is it, is it all related to people camping in neighborhoods or is it in a few different areas? So it enables or empowers better decision-making in the future with where we're putting our, uh, enforcement resources. So, yeah, it looks great.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, Council General?
Yeah, just a question from the chair and without delving too much into the appetite to do it, just mostly on the explanation of software and the possibilities. Is it, is it possible to make, uh, complaints not anonymous on a staff level? As in you can see who, uh, put in the complaint, however, they'd be anonymous to the public. As in they could not log into C-click Fix and see Joe Smith posted this, uh, thing. Is that a possibility to be it? Maybe not with the software facing that, because that seems like it would be, um, a little, you know, too little, too late, but in the new software, is that a wrong change or?
That's Your Worship. Yes, it, it is possible. Uh, the new software system does have, as Orlando alluded to, quite a bit more functionality for that, a lot more customization when it comes to how these complaints can be submitted. Uh, the system does allow it to actually, eh, you, you still have to enter in some information. So we have an ability to contact you to follow up if there's additional questions or concerns, um, as well as if bylaw staff need to be able to subpoena the individual. If it gets to a larger case where we're looking to, uh, file long-form information, we're doing one of those larger scale enforcements, say on something like a short-term rental. Uh, it does allow us that ability to have that contact information for them. The public wouldn't necessarily be able to see those complaints. It would, we, we have the ability to kind of, uh, keep all that information internal. Obviously, we're not going to be releasing the information on those who, who is filing these complaints as it is protected. But it is something, yes, the system does have a lot more functionality for that ability.
Yeah, I think that would probably solve a good deal of those problems just by itself as soon as people have to put a name behind it. Even if it's not allowed in public facing, they're significantly less le, less likely to be, you know, the people that people can be when they don't have to go behind the scenes or something, you don't know.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from council? Council Chair?
Just happy to support. Any ongoing improvements to our current system or a new one?
Sure, good. Thank you, uh, Mr. Gips, Mr. Zimmer. I appreciate your input on this. Um, we're going to move on to correspondence. Uh, I had a conversation with Ms. Floyd regarding U V C M, uh, provincial appointments. And so I'm going to ask if there's some specific appointments. I've got a list of things that I think that we can be discussing with our provincial counterparts. Uh, but also if there is some things that you would like to see us meet. Uh, so first of all, with the ministers, um, we have a deadline of July second. For staff, I believe it's August twentieth. Um, yeah, August twentieth for our staff. So if there's some stuff that comes up after we meet today, if you want to either send myself or Janet an email suggesting that, uh, these are the reasons that we should be meeting with the staff and then we can bring that back to council. And, uh, before we make those requests, are you okay with that? Uh, with July second stuff, we want to do that today? Is that correct?
Uh, the July second stuff, sorry, uh, Your Worship, it could come forward on the June twenty-fourth.
Okay.
We do have a little bit of time.
Okay, so we've got some time. So, uh, really, I'm just going to kind of go through, uh, stuff that I would like to see us. So just to, uh, kind of confirm, our minister meetings are fifteen minutes. It's like speed dating. Have to understand that when we're, when we're meeting with the ministers, uh, it's going to be a big high overview. Part of that, uh, meeting seems to be, they like to have a photograph of everyone that comes to meet with them. So there's five to seven minutes of your appointment time. Uh, so there's not much that you're going to accomplish. So we want to really be, uh, precise in what we deal with, that sort of thing. Uh, when we're meeting with staff, we have thirty minutes of time and we tend to get more work done when we're meeting with staff, uh, because we can put subsequent appointments in to, uh, meet with that. So, uh, before I suggest some of the things that we need, uh, Mr. Parton, any comments on what I just said?
No, I mean, Mr. Mayor, we talked about it briefly the other day. Um, I know every year it seems like a lot of work to prepare and brief ministries on the issues affecting Revelstoke. But we have seen some real benefit in terms of actual grant dollars and extra support. Most recently, uh, most notably the, the work that we've done with the Ministry of Environment, vis-à-vis the, uh, wastewater treatment plant in Pass. And also, of course, with Highway Patrol on Highway One, working with the R C M P. So these are important. Uh, but just to echo the mayor's, uh, request, um, it's the staff meetings that I focus on. It's the thirty minutes with the key staffers that work in the ministries that it, uh, allows me to spend my time at U V C M, pushing some of these items that you elected officials have a chance to talk to the minister through that fifteen-minute speed dating exercise. So, you know, please have faith that the process does yield results, uh, but we just have to be very specific on our ask and extremely aggressive in reminding them that, uh, we're not going away and we need to continue to push what we need for, whether it's extra dollars for a new rec center, extra policing, affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera.
Great, thank you. All right, uh, so I'm just going to rattle off a couple of things and, and all of you will have a chance to, uh, weigh in. But I also would like you to send us an email with your list as well. And then, uh, we can kind of go from there. I'm concerned about giving a big list and, and, uh, Ms. Franklin trying to figure out where we're going with some of this stuff. So Minister Forrest, I, I would like to, to, uh, meet with the Minister Forrest. I would like to actually formally invite him and his team to Revelstoke to see what we're doing, both with our C E C and, uh, talk about fire smarting and the things that we would like to perform in the community. Uh, Minister of Municipal Affairs, we'd like to meet with that minister. Uh, those ministries seem to, to change. We want to talk about funding for wastewater treatment and other projects that we have in the community. I would like to speak with, uh, uh, Minister of Health, uh, Ms. Osborne. I would like to talk about, uh, seniors facilities in our community. So those are the sorts of things. Would also, uh, uh, like to speak to the Minister, uh, the Solicitor General. I know him personally and we're going to bring up some issues regarding, uh, safety and community. And then for staffing, I really think that we want to, uh, meet with, uh, Minister regarding environmental and, uh, parks rec sites, uh, regarding, uh, more foot toilets in the area for tourism. Um, I'd like to see some funding for emergency exercises. So we want to meet with, uh, emergency, uh, management. Um, and then we want to talk about rec sites again regarding, R C, R C N C is proposing with indigenous, uh, regarding a campground. They keep telling us that, uh, they don't have capacity for that. Those are easy wins. Uh, meeting with M O T T and I C B C regarding highways issues. Again, B C Housing, uh, we, Mr. President, we need to remember who we are, where we are. Move forward, B C Hydro with some of their plans for the future. And then again, R C M P, and when we're talking about R C M P, we have thirteen percent of our, uh, our members are paid for by the provincial government, but thirty-two percent of our calls are, uh, on the highway or outside our municipal boundaries. So I'd like to see another one or two officers paid for by the municipal government, which means increasing officers. So they've been receptive and they've figured out a way. They've done their surveys here. So I think continuing to do that asked. So now, uh, there's other, Council Chair, you have some answers.
Thanks, Marisol. I'm wondering if it would be beneficial to schedule a special meeting with council and staff to go over a number of issues. We are fully prepared, uh, before our date. And if that's not available, then I will name and watch out right now.
Okay, Ms. Floyd, how do you feel? Uh, thank you now about capacity for staff?
The council email.
You, Marisol, I would, I would think that if you sent an email, like there's some questions that if we put a request in, we need the name of the ministry or staff, what the issue is. We need to give them as much background information as possible and we need to know that there's no guarantee that the meetings will be accepted. So if this is going to come forward again on June twenty-fourth, I think we could come up with some kind of like memorandum to discuss that day with everybody's list compiled.
Okay, and the reason I do ask that is, you know, under, if you go through the booklet, under each, uh, section, there's certain divisions that are able to attend different meetings. So if I say, hey, I'd like to meet Minister Finance, or I think we should, you know, which divisions do we want there regarding which issues?
And sometimes we're better to meet with staff, but definitely, so if you want to compile that list, uh, if you want to quickly go through it now, uh, that's fine, but if you prefer to compile that list and we bring it up at the twenty-fourth meeting and then I can go through it in detail.
I can name a few now, but I'm happy to provide a little email as well.
Okay.
Uh, Ministry of Land, sorry, Water, Land and Resources regarding funding for cleaning out areas with debris and abandoned vehicles within city limits on walrus lands. Ministry of Transportation and Transit for an update on our buses, transit buses, which are now two years late. Ministry of Post-Secondary Education and Future Skills to talk about the lack of post-secondary education opportunities in Revelstoke. Uh, for example, many of our trades have to go over to Kenloops to get their hours, sorry, get their schooling to go with their hours for trades. Uh, Ministry of Jobs, Economic Development and Innovation, uh, chat about funding opportunities for all things related to act dev. The Council Orlando can speak to that. They've been working on as well as funding opportunities for a multiplex in airport. Uh, you've named a couple that I've got listed here. Uh, Minister of Finance, looking for funding opportunities for large infrastructure projects like our wastewater treatment facilities, as well as property tax and assessment policy, which I think is a huge one in our community. Uh, Ministry of Emergency Management and Climate, Climate Ready, sorry, Climate Readiness to speak about opportunities and talk about our challenges with Revelstoke being remote in this department. Uh, yeah, we'll be at that for now and fire the rest off, but you know, I know.
Council Speaker?
I think, I think overarching, my, my general sentiment is talk to the ministries that support the resolutions put forth by Revelstoke at Silga. I think that should be, um, a, a priority. And, and, you know, I, I, I'm not going to go through the ministries. Um, and then some of the other ones that hadn't been me, mentioned is talking to the Ministry of, of Children and Family Development. Um, you know, childcare is still an ongoing issue in Revelstoke and how can we better support that moving forward? So.
Okay, thank you. Any other council, or comments at this point? Council Orlando?
Yeah, just regarding, uh, the process, um, question for staff is, is in terms of your deadline for receiving, to be able to prepare for the twenty-fourth, I think. Um, and secondly, um, how much, uh, information, uh, would staff want? Uh, so obviously either the minister or the ministry or the division of the ministry, um, how much information on topics? Uh, just, does staff need to be able to compile?
Anywhere from a couple sentences to, uh, a paragraph that can be concise as, uh, as possible, especially when we're meeting with them. Uh, and what I mean by concise, uh, we want to get to the point right away. If there is things that are a broader term, we're probably going to get those meetings turned down. So we want to be direct and to the point as to why we're, we're asking for it. And, uh, so if we can get something off, uh, before the agenda is published next Thursday, uh, would that work for you or for Janet or do you want something earlier than that?
Uh, thank you, Marisol. Earlier would be better because we will have to compile something. It'll take some staff time to actually get everybody's ideas together in some kind of format that will facilitate a discussion.
Okay, so, uh, if we could have something for by the end of day on Tuesday, to, then would that be beneficial? On the right, Tuesday, Tuesday.
The seventeenth.
Thank you. Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Sorry to interrupt you. Can you send us a, a deadline?
Yes, absolutely.
Sounds perfect.
Council General?
Um, I don't know. I mean, I guess everybody can do this, but maybe just a talking point. If we can make sure that council is CC'd on these emails so that we're not all just repeating everything everybody is saying. Because otherwise we're just going to be, I'm sure we all have a lot of the same issues and there's no point making staff wait through them all. Like if you're mentioning a specific thing that I also have on my list, I don't need to mention it again.
And feel free to add it.
Yeah, exactly.
Good point. Good point.
Just to, uh, emphasize, uh, the mayor is a hundred percent correct. You want to keep it to a bottom paragraph, very specific, what's your ask? The feedback we get from the folks in the provinces, you can imagine, they're trying to stick handle a hundred seventy, hundred seventy-five municipalities and all these resolutions. They just want a one-page paragraph that's very specific, very concise. We have several over the years that we can share as a template to give you an idea of how to craft an order. But yeah, just try to keep it to a paragraph and then we will get down to the specifics in terms of the ask. Keep in mind, about sixty, seventy percent of all requests are rejected just because they don't have room. But that doesn't mean we can't pursue these initiatives outside of U V C M throughout the year.
Good, thank you for that. I appreciate that comment. That's not a special. All right, uh, Council Orlando and then Council Chair?
Yeah, yes, uh, thank you, Marisol. Yeah, yeah, my question was more focused on internal and how, what staff wants to see in order to, to do that, uh, in order to compile the list. Um, then the next question was regarding, um, what we're doing, uh, when this list, uh, compiled list come forward. Are we going to be, uh, trying to attain all of the meetings? Are we going to be deciding which ones we do and don't want to pursue, uh, at the, the next?
Let's, let's see if we can, once it comes in and we, it comes back to us, Councilor, if we can quickly prioritize some of this stuff and then we can go from there. And then, because we may not have the capacity to go after everything that's on that list. We need to be, and, and then we need to have a conversation about who's going to go to U V C M and see, uh, who's going to take some of these meetings on. Because we may not all be able to go to U V C M and we may not all have the capacity to go to every meeting. Because quite often the meetings are overlapping and, uh, the meetings may be, uh, one of them's up in the Baguette and the next one's over in Victoria or whatever. So then it's like, okay, how can you, how can you get to them all? Right? So I think that's a thing. Ms. Floyd?
Uh, thank you, Marisol. I think that, uh, we could come up with a template to share with all of you. And each item, it would like have which ministry, whatever division, and then what you want to discuss and your paragraph or whatever. And then all of those could be compiled for a discussion on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, does that answer all of your questions?
Yeah, and just to follow up a comment, you know, the reason I'm asking is, you know, last year at the last minute, we had some challenges at the table with, uh, some council members saying they're going to go speak on the floor against our own resolutions and it was a bit chaotic. Um, I'm not that sure, um, what the resolution of that was, so I'm just trying to. So I'm just trying to discern an orderly process where when we go make whatever asks, we are successful at getting to the table for, we can do so as a group sharing the same goals. And that's what I'm trying to get. So thanks to staff for calling upon the procedure questions.
Great, all right. Good, thank you all. Appreciate your input. So I am going to ask us to go in camera pursuant to Section 90.1D of the Community Charter. Actually, just before I go, we have communications on there. Yes, questions?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay, so Mr. Lindquist, with all due respect, I'm honored to see you in there. You're here, I'm just going to ask if there's any questions you have before I go in camera.
Good night, Your Worship. Through the chair, just to enhance my own understanding, at this point, following the defeat of the motion regarding communication for the mobile home works matter, so staff will go ahead with communication with the public as needed by the public?
At this point, that's what we have, yes.
Okay.
If development comes up, if development comes up in their area and there has to be something that goes out, then staff will do that.
Okay.
Okay?
I appreciate it. Thank you, Your Worship.
Anything else?
That's all.
All right. Okay, counsel, I'd like to go in camera pursuant to Section 90.1D of the Community Charter. Someone made the motion. Counselor Devlin, seconded by Counselor Jerry, all in favor. Motion's carried. We'll take a couple-minute break and come back in camera.
We can mute?
Yes, please.